There you go. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village of Cottage Grove. I'm getting some echo, somebody? Who's got the double mic on? Nobody? All right, let's keep trying here. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village of Cottage Grove, Village Board Meeting of Trustees. We are here in the Village Hall as well as on Zoom. A Zoom link is top of the agenda, and there's also an audio call-in number as well. We have a quorum, and the agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, so that, just in case, we have a lot of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I'll be quiet. Anybody in the room or on Zoom, please raise your hand and come forward. Next, then, is discuss and consider our meeting minutes from our regular Village Board meeting held way back in January 16th. Any questions, comments, edits, regards to the meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next, then, we move into some presentations to the board. First up is from Alliant Energy, which is an update regarding the construction of a new substation facility. We have representatives from Alliant. Just come up to the podium and the table and press the button that looks like a person that's got a couple of smiley faces by it, and there should be a red thing. I don't know how else to explain it.
All right, I'm Jessica Barr. I work with Alliant Energy. Share my screen here.
We aren't seeing it yet, but...
There we go. Now?
Not yet. There we go. It's coming up now.
Okay.
Got it?
Perfect. Sorry for the delay.
No, you're fine.
All right, so Alliant Energy has been working with the community here since 2021. We came to the village with a proposal on Bonnie Road, and with public comment, it was decided not to move forward with that project. So in 2023, we reviewed sites that were close to the transmission line as that became kind of a sticking point. So one of the sites that we kind of vetted in 2023 was behind the Piggly Wiggly. It was privately owned, and as we investigated further, we found out that there were some wetland impacts that we couldn't move forward with. So then we decided to investigate a parcel of land loaned in, owned, again, behind the Piggly Wiggly, but it's owned by the village. So we are looking for approximately two to two and a half acres of land. It's located right behind the Piggly Wiggly. There's, you can see the wetlands are delineated in the blue. Red area is the wetland. Blue is the area that we need to stay out of. We would be looking for the city to potentially provide some access, public access, to this site. So we've kind of had conversations with staff about how that might work. There was conversations about potentially doing a cul-de-sac or something like that in anaisement to get back to the village-owned property. We would have to purchase the property from the village. So this is the proposition we're coming to you in, in front of you with at this point.
Jessica, just so you can remind the public and everyone here, the reason for the need to place this substation between the two existing substations.
I'm going to let Greg expand upon that.
Okay. I think most of the board has heard this, but we would just, I think it would be helpful to have the reason why that you guys are coming forward with this.
Sure. Greg, I'm the project manager for the area and all the substations in our territory. So we have our Gaston Road Station to the north, near the interstate, and the Cottage Grove Station to the south. And the only north-south road we have is County Inn. And what we're attempting to do is to make sure, well, today, if either station goes out, there is no bag up for them. So we have customers in the dark. That's number one. Number two, we like nice routes to route between the stations, and north-south roads really help with that without wiggling through subdivisions and things. We end up doing some of that because we have to, but that isn't a preference. So putting a substation, in essence, in the hole of the doughnut will allow us to then separate our system, the north side and the south side, with a station in the middle. That's primarily what it would do. Increase capacity, because we don't have it today. Even with rebuilding our two stations, which we are doing this year, we still don't have enough capacity, simply because of the load is in the center of town, and that's really where we need to source that.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Questions from board members?
When you say you don't have enough capacity, can you kind of validate what that means? I think of not having enough capacity as you must have customers in the dark today if you don't have enough capacity to fill their demand.
So in an outage situation, we don't have enough capacity. So our normal conditions, we can serve everybody, so no issues there. But if they have any complications at either one of the stations, some level of our customers will be out of service until we fix it.
So in the case of expansion, and like, I think about like Amazon on the other side of the highway. Is that coming from the substation over there, the power coming from there?
Correct, yes, to the north.
Let's say you don't have an outage. Do you have enough bandwidth in that facility to power Amazon?
We will.
Okay.
Today, we don't, but we will.
Okay.
Yeah, just as you mentioned that, so what we're doing at our, what's called our Gaston Road Station, is we're putting in another transformer and a completely separate bus. It all looked the same, but it really is separate to separate the load north of the interstate and then south back toward the village.
Can you share more about the cul-de-sac and what that would look like and where it would connect?
So at this moment, I don't think we have real specific plans. There's, the general idea would be to come down the, here, let, come down the privately-held road driveway that serves the Piggly Wiggly and Arlington Investments. And then the cul-de-sac would be back in this area, potentially. And then we would probably be looking for some type of easement to get back to the village-owned site here.
And just, who owns that land that we would be putting the cul-de-sac on? Is that the privately-held land?
Yes, yep.
That we would need to get an easement for?
Purchase the property probably from.
Oh, I see. You'd purchase the property.
Prior to, and then make it a public roadway. And then as part of that, we would gain access to the site in the back.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's...
Sorry, go ahead.
I know it's early in the plans, but, and there aren't houses immediately adjacent to this area, but I'm not sure what views are from any properties farther away. What kind of screening plans are generally with this type of project? Or maybe we have some, some say in that through the approval process. But is it fenced with, like, plantings around, or?
Our typical design is the, the tall fence with three barbed wire on the top. We have no problems at all doing landscaping per the requirements of the village.
That's kind of goes into what I was going to say. This looks like a lot of this village-owned property is wooded. I was just curious, how far north from the red line would you have to clear trees?
You're speaking of like this line right here?
Yeah.
That would be the extent of the land that we'd be probably purchasing, so we wouldn't be extending off the property we would purchase for clearing purposes. Now, we will be interconnecting with American Transmission Company, and their transmission line currently runs right along the property line here. So we would be interconnecting, they'd make a tap line into the sub from here.
And those are overhead? They can't be buried because they're big, right? Okay.
Correct.
I'm trying to remember these things from the last Plan Commission, from the last one, so thank you for reminding me.
With that tap line, is that, is that ATC's responsibility? Is that your responsibility? What does that look like from the village perspective? From an easement, I guess I'm asking from an easement perspective?
It would be ATC's responsibility, yeah. I think, design-wise, we're preliminary on, so we would actually have to work with them to come up with a design. And I'm thinking, ideally, it would be across the village property to get to the substation.
So we've been looking for spots for quite some time, and the longer we would delay anything, the further we would risk potentially residents being without power in the event of one of the other substations going down, just to confirm I'm understanding right.
Correct. In 2021, we were probably okay then. Now we're not.
Okay, thanks.
So this is just a presentation. What's the next steps?
Have to go to plan and...
Yeah, so there's the closed session tonight, so those parcels listed in the closed session, there's not really addresses for them, so we use the parcel numbers, but like, that's, the purpose of the closed session tonight is discuss this and determine if this, basically, if the village is interested in negotiating and what the negotiation position would be. So that's the purpose of the closed session tonight, and then we can see if there's any further action after that.
What's the typical downtime for a substation that goes down? I mean, if you, it obviously depends on what happens.
Correct.
And if something's not available, it could take longer. But I mean, if you looked at substations that have gone down for Alliant, how long are they down?
So now, we've bought some additional equipment to shorten that duration. We would pull in a portable transformer, and we recently purchased what's called a portable switchgear. So within probably a day, I mean, the full 24 hours, we should have service back.
Okay.
So assuming the transmission line doesn't have any issues, so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Next, then, we have an update from Hot to Trot Race Routes. Cindy?
All right, this is Kel Nelson, presentation number one of the night. So I am the race director for the Hot to Trotts. I'm also the vice president of the Board of Directors. We're an entirely volunteer group, and our mission is to give all of the race proceeds back to the fire department in Cottage Grove. We have a half marathon 5K and kids' race the Saturday morning of the Fireman's Festival. What you have in your agenda tonight are the race routes, which have not changed in the last two years, and there's no road construction. So that's good news for everyone involved. This is the 13th annual race. We have raised over $80,000 to the fire departments. We are looking to give probably our biggest race, the biggest donation this year. We already have 160 people signed up, which is double where we normally are at this time of year. So that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Cindy?
Can people register now? Is registration open?
Yeah, registration's open. I can give you a discount if you're interested. And we are always looking for volunteers. We especially like it when the president bikes the 5K route for us. We are...
And don't fall down.
The library president is happy to give up biking the half marathon route if someone wants to take that over. It's because it's a pretty busy morning that usually starts at 3:00 a.m. for the people that are involved in it. It's so much fun. We, yeah, we're always looking for volunteers. I think that that's pretty much our weakest link when we put this race on, is we went from a group of 80 volunteers down to like 25. So that's something that I think every nonprofit struggles with. So we are always looking for victims, volunteers, or run the race.
All right. Thanks, Cindy.
All right, thanks.
All right, then we move on to unfinished business. And first up is to discuss and consider the proposed 2024 Financial Management Plan, CIP amendment.
So before Greg kicks it off, just a reminder why we're here today. During the initial 2024 FMP process, there was a lot of question marks specific around facilities that we needed to come back to you with a solution. So over the last couple of months, Greg and I and FGM have kind of worked out a financially feasible solution to the next 10 years' worth of improvement. I will say, you know, while this is a, we're going to be working forward on this, there are still going to be things in the near future that we'll want to keep an eye on, tax impact, et cetera, for some of the other projects outside of, you know, the need. So every year, we'll want to make sure we're looking at and reevaluating projects to make sure that the tax impact is reasonable for our residents. So with that said, I'll kick it back to Greg.
That was a great overview of kind of why we're here today. So just to kind of recap some of the objectives that I'll address in the presentation this evening. First is what Cameron just alluded to, kind of an update to the long-range capital model for the village based on project changes and dollar amounts identified in the Capital Improvement Plan. So the primary revisions that we've included is we've updated the 2024 list based on anticipated capital projects occurring this year. The village is looking at acquiring some land within TID District Number Nine, so we've incorporated that as well. And then we've looked at adding in a proposed police station in future years. So as we did when we updated the Financial Management Plan, we'll show the long-term impact on the debt service levy for all village capital projects and also look at your general obligation debt capacity utilization. So in terms of the 2024 project list, we kind of have identified, you know, kind of what the changes and additions have been, you know, since the original plan was put together and kind of what has been proposed now. So there's been some changes in kind of the overall dollar amount. So what we're looking at for kind of the non-TID projects was about 5.3 million. Now we're at about 5.6 million for those projects that are identified. So we just kind of show the difference between what we had put together last fall and what we're looking at now kind of in the center column. And then the land acquisition for projects within TID District Number Nine, that totals about 4.9 million. I'll be speaking about that. And then there's a resolution on your agenda later to authorize beginning the financing project for the TID Nine land acquisition. So when we kind of look at, you know, the levy-supported projects, again, a little over 5.3 million to about 5.6 million, and then the TID projects total about 4.9 million. So in terms of some of the major changes that have been made to the list, the municipal services building project was removed and was replaced with the police station. The Humber Park project was also removed. Just a general note, when we kind of talk about the year the projects are being funded, engineering and planning expenses may occur in the year or years prior to what is shown in the CIP. So just noting that when we look at a project in a particular year, some of those initial costs may be incurred prior to the bulk of the project being financed. So we've included in your packet just kind of the detailed list of all the projects that are included in the Capital Improvement Plan. We kind of highlighted and read those projects that were taken out. So again, mainly the municipal services building that was replaced with the police station with an estimated cost of about 23.2 million. And then the Humber Park project was taken out. That was about a $3 million project. So we're really looking at financing, you know, projects over a multi-year basis. So this is really a long-term CIP, understanding that, you know, projects are not, you know, committed to as of yet. We're looking at really in the short term, you know, projects in 2024, future years, are just there for planning purposes. So we understand this is a flexible document. We update it as priorities and capital estimates change. So in terms of the village's existing debt, this just kind of shows where we stand before we look at the impact of financing any additional projects. So on the far-left-hand column, we have your total principal and interest payments that are due. This is for general obligation debt. The village budgets several non-levy revenue sources to repay your existing debt, mainly revenues from TIDS Five, Six, and Seven, and then some revenue from the sewer and water utility, and then some modest investment income is used to abate your debt service levy as well. So in your 2024 budget, your levy for debt service was $1,309,626. So we show that that levy remains fairly stable going forward before we look at the impact of adding new financings for the multi-year CIP. So this shows where we're starting before we look at the impact of new projects. So we've built in some interest rate assumptions into the model. So we show several financings all the way out from 2024 through 2032 to finance all of these projects, kind of built in some cushion into these interest rate assumptions. One item I kind of want to address here on this slide that kind of pertains particularly to the 2024 financings is that, under current state law, you know, there are certain types of projects that can be financed with bonds. Bonds have a term of repayment term of greater than 10 years, up to 20 years, but only certain types of projects are bond-eligible. Notes, under current law, have a term up to 10 years or less. There was some meaningful legislation that passed through the state a couple of weeks ago that is awaiting the governor's signature that would occur in April, early April is what we're anticipating. And what this legislation did is it changed the statutory definition of the term of a note from 10 years to up to 20 years. So what that means is essentially renders the bond statutes kind of irrelevant. They will still exist, but you won't necessarily have to make a distinction between whether a project is financed with notes or financed with bonds. That's meaningful because the note statutes are much broader in terms of what you can finance, and you have more flexibility in terms of how you spend those proceeds. In the past, when the village has issued bonds and financed several different types of projects, like a street project and a park project, it was all financed with one bond issue, but you had to specify how much you're borrowing for streets, how much you're borrowing for parks, and you couldn't co-mingle those funds between those purposes. Now, if you wanted to do a 20-year financing, if this new law passes, you can issue it as notes. You can still finance all those same types of projects. But if you decide you want to move money around after you get your project bids, you'll have more flexibility to do that. So it's not going to change the levy impacts that we're talking about because the debt would be structured similarly, whether we're issuing notes or issuing bonds. It's just going to make the debt issuance process more efficient and potentially cut down on, you know, years where you might have to do two debt issues if some projects aren't bond-eligible. So put this plan together under the current law because, you know, that new legislation, while passed both the Assembly and the Senate, it's not law yet, but hopefully will be in April, which could then impact your, your future financings beyond the TID Nine land acquisition that we're looking at starting this evening. So one to kind of explain that, that is meaningful legislation that's really going to provide more flexibility for communities going forward when they issue debt. So when we look at kind of the broader impact of your existing debt and then all the future debt issuance from 2024 through 2023, based on the current version of the Capital Improvement Plan, the debt was structured so the levy change per year would be fairly consistent for budgetary purposes. So to finance all of those projects from 2024 through 2023, including the police station, the debt service levy would increase by approximately $650,000 per year. So we show what the annual taxes would be on a home valued at $315,000, and then we show of that total how much would be attributable exclusively to the police station in the far-right-hand column on an annual basis. So again, to fund everything in the CIP, that would be the levy increase that would be needed. Again, that's just for debt service. That doesn't include any other levy adjustments for operations or your capital funds. So again, the debt structure to kind of arrive at that consistent levy impact, so we're not seeing, you know, wild fluctuations in your debt service levy, even though in certain years, you're certainly financing a healthier amount of capital projects, we try to keep that levy impact fairly consistent. So in terms of your general obligation debt capacity, so what that is again is you can, the village can have up to 5% of principal outstanding on a general obligation basis under state law. So at the end of 2023, the village's debt limit was approximately 62 million. The village had general obligation debt outstanding of approximately 23.5 million. So the village is at 38% of its debt limit, which leaves the village about 38.5 million of remaining borrowing capacity. So kind of looking at the financing horizon within this plan all the way out till 2032, you would be projected to peak in 2026, and about 66% of your debt limit, that's largely attributable to the police station project being financed at that particular time. So it's kind of a gradual ramp-up, but then your debt capacity kind of remains at that mid-60 range and then gradually starts to decline. So, you know, when we look at this in kind of a longer-term context, one of the things we would want to consider is, you know, we'd looked at kind of the affordability in terms of what the levy impact is going to be. The other consideration is how would that impact, you know, the village's rating with standard and pores? And I think, you know, due to the fact that the, you know, police station facility is still a few years out, typically, when we have conversations with the rating agencies, we show them the same analysis that you all see so they can see that we are planning out several years ahead and anticipating some, you know, larger, what we call legacy projects. You know, you're not building a police station on a regular basis. So this is kind of giving them a preview of what's coming. And so the fact that it's a few years out is beneficial. If we were to go to 38%, immediately to 66%, that would likely present some problems just because that kind of looks like it's coming out of the field. But by the fact that this is a few years out, we can kind of show that we're planning and still, you know, leaving a healthy amount of borrowing capacity for anything that's unforeseen and not accounted for in the current CIP. So I think it's manageable in terms of that, that impact is still a few years out, and we can communicate that at this point in time. Next, I want to kind of touch on kind of the, a new aspect of the 24 Financing Plan, which is the financing of the TID Nine projects, so land acquisition. So just kind of some history on TID District Nine. This TID district was created back in 2018. In construction years 2021 and 2022, saw some notable increases in the incremental value within the TID district. That's represented in the actual column. A lot of that is related to the Authentix development. That project was anticipated to complete construction in 2023, so anticipating there being additional 18 million of value being added. And then if the village purchases these properties, that can cause a removal of some taxable value that's there now. So we show that occurring over the next couple of years. So in this analysis, we're looking at if the village finances the land acquisition within the TID district now, but there would be no additional development within the district, which is, you know, likely, unlikely. If you're going to buy those properties, you're likely going to try to facilitate some development, which would... If you're going to buy those properties, you're likely going to try to facilitate some development, which would increase the incremental value. But we're trying to take a conservative look that just says, based on what's been constructed in that district thus far, anticipated remainder of value from the Authentics development. Could the TID district support the debt service needed for the land acquisition for TID nine? So we take that incremental value that's projected and we forecast the tax increment that would be collected over the remaining life of the district. This district can remain open up to 20 years. So that's kind of the revenue stream and the far right-hand column is what would be available to repay the debt service for this district. So when we look at the cash flow projection, even though there's been development within this TID district that has generated that incremental value, there's been no significant cost incurred by the village to bring that development to fruition. No incentives or major infrastructure that's been funded. So the district has, has a modest deficit at this point in time, which is not unusual for TID districts when they start because there's always a two-year lag before any tax increment gets generated. So looking at kind of issuing debt to handle the land purchases, amortize that debt between 2025 and 2032 shows that the increment, you know, is forecasted to be sufficient to cover that debt service. So again, that's not factoring in any new development on the land that's being purchased, just taking into account what's already been built and estimated value that would have been added in 2023. So if no other additional costs were incurred within this district, which, you know, it may be subject, there may be other expenses you decide to undertake. But just if you finance that land, if nothing else really happened, you'd still be in position to close the district by 2032. So this district is in, you know, very strong financial position. By the fact that you've seen that initial development without any expense correlating to it, you can repurpose that increment for land acquisition within the district. So the TID is well positioned to, to handle that. So to kind of summarize kind of the, the presentation and happy to answer questions or further discussion. So again, the tax levy impact for financing all of the capital projects. So from 2025 through 2020, 2033 budget years, that levy increase is approximately $650,000 per year to fund all the projects that were identified, including the police station. Your geodat utilization peaks out at 66%, which is in year 2026. And then for the TID nine, the increment from the development in progress is anticipated to cover the debt service for the land acquisition. So where we go from here, as I mentioned, there's a resolution later on your agenda this evening, which is kind of the first step to begin the debt issuance process. That would start the financing for just the TID nine land acquisition. None of the other capital projects are proposed to be financed at this point in time. We anticipate that that'll happen, you know, later this year, kind of a mid-year timeframe to kind of more coincide with the project timing. But it's also beneficial to see if that legislation I mentioned is passed because that would streamline your 2024 financing plan as it's presented here in this document. Instead of doing two debt issuances, you could do one, which is much more efficient and cost-effective. So I think that lines up anyways with kind of the timeline we're anticipating proceeding with the financing. But that's just kind of an added reason to kind of sit tight, to kind of see what happens. But just due to cash flow considerations, we're kind of moving ahead with the TID nine financing now to make sure that the village gets those funds recouped and just doesn't cause any cash flow concerns for the village. So that's kind of the overview of the update, kind of the, the new forecast. And then including the TID nine financing that we're proposing starting this evening. So at that, I'll pause, see if staff has anything further they'd like to add, otherwise I'm happy to address questions.
Yeah, I'll just add one, one quick thing. Obviously, the, the biggest change in, in what Greg was presenting was the addition of the police station. You know, just to recap, when FGM came in here, you know, we, we came with a plan of a 45,000 square foot building to really fit the, the village's need, scope that way back into about half of it to get to a palatable tax impact for the community. That being said, in 2026, consistent with how we present other projects, it would be reasonable that we may even start incurring costs as early as 2024 when it comes to going out for bid for architectural services, design services. Again, all of that would come back to this, this board before any official decisions are made. Just want to make this, this body aware that there could be some costs as early as 2024. And then I guess I'll give it, leave it to you guys for questions.
Any questions for Greg or Cameron?
I'm looking at page eight. Do we have a similar, one of these that we did for the library?
We do.
I tried, I tried to find it, but I was having trouble finding it and listening at the same time. So I'd be interested in seeing what that looks like. But I guess what I'm trying to get my head around is, we were told a couple of months ago, $20 million library isn't going to happen within the next 10 years. And now we're looking at a $23 million police station two years from now. So I don't, how is that possible?
The, the biggest reason for the difference is this isn't going to significantly increase operating costs. Where the library, you're adding, you're not only are you adding capital costs or adding operational costs. And through the levy adjustment process, you can take debt as a levy limit adjustment. You cannot take operating costs. So that's where that becomes not financially feasible in the near future where this project is.
Okay, I guess that brings to the mind, isn't it necessarily, aren't we talking about building a police station because they don't have enough space now? Aren't they going to be hiring more people? Isn't that going to be operating cost?
Yeah, incrementally increasing over time. It won't be an immediate, you know, 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. It, as we grow, that would get layered on there. So, you know, this really, this, this project, and I don't know if she was here tonight, but is to, is a building that we can grow into. And I think another key thing to keep in mind is this is not going to satisfy 20 years' worth of growth, potential growth. There's, in the plan that FGM put, there's three different, at least three different segments of the building for potential additions to allow us to have the space that, that they need.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Any other questions?
Greg, I'm trying to make sense of, uh, page 10. So the, the TID nine, so the, the land acquisition, I'm trying to understand between page 10 and page 12, projected revenue. So like, does, help me understand these, page 10, is this, are we? Because you, you made a comment about how, you know, you make the assumption you're not adding any additional revenue, right? So that we buy the land and it just sits for the next 20 years, 15 years. Is that, so help me make sense of page 10 versus page 12, because 12 looks like there is incremental value, or am I not reading this right?
Sure. So page 10, this is, these are taxable values. So this is new tax value that's been generated since the district was created. So in the actual column, it shows the increase in value in the TID district since it was created. So in construction year 2018, the value increased by $78,400. Jumping ahead to 2022, there was an increase in value of 26.2 million. So all of that kind of adds up to the current incremental value that's been certified in the TID district through January, assessed through January 1st of 2023. So that's what's been built, that's taxable value that is there now, that wasn't there before the TID district was created. So in the next column over under where it says completion of Authentics development, so that's a projection. So, you know, that project started in 2022 is the primary reason for that increase in incremental value in that construction year. We're anticipating another 18 million of taxable value will be, have been constructed in 2023. So the removable of taxable property is if you purchase the property, improvements are removed, goes from taxable to tax exempt. You have what's called decrement. You lose some value. So that's why those are kind of negative numbers. So, so this chart is all about valuation. So the actual column, what's, what's there as of the most recent value certified by the Department of Revenue? The Authentics, the 18 million, that's an estimate. And then we're projecting you'll lose some value because you're converting from taxable to tax exempt.
And as a reminder, taxes are based off of 1-1, so for this year, 1-1 2024. So only one of the three total properties that we looked at purchasing will fall off. Where the, the last two would fall off in 2025, January 1 of 2025, it will be off the books from a taxable perspective.
So I know you asked about page 12. I'm going to explain page 11 because it kind of, this all kind of goes sequentially.
Yep.
So we kind of take the valuation information from the previous page and then we use that to project how much tax revenue the district is going to create over its maximum life. So with TID districts, we always break things down between construction year, valuation year, and revenue year. So we're going to use kind of line five on this spreadsheet as an example because it's the most current fiscal year. So in 2022, there was 26.2 million roughly of new incremental value added to the district. So when we add that to all the value that had been generated in years prior, the incremental value for the district is $27,731,600. So what gets constructed in 2022 gets valued as of January 1st of 2023. That determines how much tax revenue you're going to collect in 2024. So that's a two-year lag, construction 22, value 23, revenue in 24. So this TID district for this fiscal year is collecting $564,271 based on 27.7 million of incremental value that's been generated in the district. So we're projecting with the completion of the Authentics project and then some loss of taxable value on village purchase sites, that that incremental value is going to increase to roughly 45.4 million. And that's the value we keep relatively constant going forward. So we're not really projecting, when I say we're not projecting any new value going forward past what was constructed in 2023. In that value-added column, you'll see it's all zeros or decrement. That's, that's what backs up what I just said, that we're not projecting any new value. So if that incremental value stabilizes around 45 million or so, you know, and the tax rate, we, TID tax rates have been declining steadily the last few years, we project that continuing. So that's, you know, that column in orange, that's how much, that's the revenue stream to the TID district over the remaining life of the district. So then to the cash flow projection, so kind of going from left to right. So in the far left-hand column, that's the tax increment. That's everything from the previous page.
Okay.
So that's the primary revenue stream to the district. You know, if you borrow money, you're going to have debt proceeds coming in to pay for the land acquisition. Under the expenditures, we have the estimated debt service for the notes, which would fund the land acquisition. Just some ongoing professional service costs within the TID district, the land purchase expense itself. And then just some administrative costs to the district. So those are all the expenditures. So the balances column, the annual is just the annual difference between revenue collected and expenses made for each fiscal year. And then the cumulative just shows how that fund balance builds up over time. So at the end of 2023, that we projected the district had a deficit of about $567,783. That's projected to become positive in 2024, remain positive in that cumulative balance until 2032. You know, again, if you incurred no other costs, nothing else happened in this district, you pay off the debt by 2032 and it would close. You're likely going to see more value, likely going to see some more costs. But we're just kind of taking a look at what we know today to make sure that before you issue debt, there's some reasonable certainty that the district can support the payments.
Okay. No, that's helpful. I think it's just, just goes to show that like, if we do literally nothing else, we're still in the black.
That's correct. That's exactly, that's exactly the point of the analysis.
Too long didn't read, right? But, um, I think, Chris, to your point, right, about the library, right? I think that I still hold out hope that there's something, again, I don't have a master plan here, but I just, in, in doing all this work, that I, I think there's, long-term, there's a possibility for potentially a retail site, right? A storefront site in the short term, working towards the long term. Again, I'm, call me Pollyannaish or, you know, misleading myself, but I, I still think there's a possibility here. So I think that's why I'm holding out hope here for, for the work that we're doing in TID number nine. Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome. Anything else for Greg or Cameron?
I just had one quick question. The Hamburg Park, was that taken out because of where it ranked in our capital priorities? Or because we're not anticipating the land being in village control by that time?
Because of those uncertainties right there, it was just taken off the table and will be reevaluated as part of this upcoming year process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Next then, discuss and consider resolution 2024 dash 02, termination of TID number seven.
Do we not need to approve the financial plan?
Whoops. Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry.
I will make a motion that we approve the proposed 2024 financial plan management, financial management plan, excuse me, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Sarah. Next then, to discuss and consider resolution 2024 dash 02, termination of TID number seven. I don't know if you want to take this or?
I could, I could take this. So almost a year ago, the village board decided to extend TID seven for affordable housing. As part of that resolution, within a year, you have to act to close the district. So technically, that's April 2nd with Greg here. I just wanted to, it doesn't hurt to bring it early, so just formally making the, the, or passing the resolution for termination.
And you want to remind everybody where TID number seven is again?
Yeah, TID seven, Aaron, I, I pretty much know, but I don't want to misspeak.
It's, it's Old Town.
Old Town, yeah.
Yeah.
Very small TID district.
I just out of curiosity, did we, because we held that open for affordable housing, did, did we have any developers show any interest?
Not for the grant-type project we were looking at, but I think we could use it for developer that's looking at some land out on Ridge Road that would be doing an affordable type of product.
So in other words, there's still hope, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Thank you.
There's a, a bill that's been introduced that would extend, extended the extension of TIDS to three years. I don't think it's going to pass, but there's an, there's an outside chance. Is it, like, if it does pass, can we revisit this if we pass this tonight?
No.
No.
I, I thought the answer was no, but we had the expert here. Um, with, with this district, while it is, it isn't a large district, it will provide some tax relief in the upcoming tax cycle. And I think that's going to be welcomed based off of the feedback from this past year. Again, it's not going to be significant, but, and the, the increment for the affordable housing that will be put in that fund is actually decent. I was going to, I'll get that number before the end of the meeting and update when I talk a little bit later.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll move that we approve resolution 2024 dash 02, termination of TID seven.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Has been motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next, we slide down to discuss and consider amendment for J E K R C R E, development agreement.
I could touch on this real quick.
You can have it.
What is this, half due? You guys didn't have to deal with me last meeting. So, uh, you know, through, uh, the original guaranteed assessed value for this project was January 1, 2023. What we're, why we're bringing this to the, the board today is to move it forward to January 1, 2024 for creation of their minimum guaranteed assessed value. Through working with J E K, they've, one, been good to work with. And two, the, you know, with the result of just construction delays and, and natural delays, it just prevented meeting their minimum assessment by the January 1, 2023. I don't have any concerns with, with the, the minor date change. Rick, I don't know if you had anything else to add?
No, the, one thing that I think we would just say is that the amendment is conditioned on them paying their, they owe some amount of money for road improvements. So I think the check's coming tomorrow, but we would just condition, condition the approval of the amendment on the village receiving the payment from J E K.
What, what is the project? I wasn't here. What, what is this project?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, Dunkin'.
And noodles, and something else, and something else. It's a big building.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to J E K C R E Development Agreement, pending payment due for road improvements.
For road improvements. All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion is second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, discuss and consider development agreement with New Tech, or his next holding, but it's the New Tech.
Yes, so this is the, an agreement with Henziac for the New Tech's new location. It's consistent with the terms that the board previously considered with the initial TIF request. Like, I'll lay, aligned in the memo, there's a little bit different structure just because we set a payment schedule rather than like an assessed value schedule, but the payments are based on them meeting a certain assessed level. So if, if they do what they say they're gonna do, they'll get their full payment. And if they don't, then the payment's reduced automatically, so.
And again, Rick, this is a pay-as-you-go, right?
Correct. There's no upfront money, it's all based on their performance. They only get paid if real estate taxes get paid and the project is finished.
Any questions about the agreement for Rick?
I'll make a motion to approve a development agreement with Henziac Holdings LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then moving to new business. This is, starting off to discuss and consider resolution 2024-03, resolution providing the sale of approximately 5,300,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, series 2024A.
So this is just to set the 2024 first borrowing for the TID land that has been discussed. So during each closed session and subsequent approval of the land purchases, just I've mentioned that obviously, you know, we don't have the cash on hand to, to pay for these properties, that debt would be coming, this is that issuance.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2024-03 regarding resolution providing the sale of approximately 5,300,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, series 2024A as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
And, and John, just a note for the board, this is step one of two in, in this process. So after the sale, Greg will return, go over the results and the, and the winning bidder and present that to the board, and that, that's the formal approval.
Yes. Next then, discuss and consider another resolution, resolution 2024-01, discontinuing Highland Drive. This is the drive that was going to split the property that the New Tech and retail building is planned for now. There was condos there before, Coil, Sandpiper, and BB.
Yes, and the, the village already approved a CSM, basically turning that property into two lots rather than the, I think there are 10 individual lots right now. So that CSM was conditioned on the discontinuance of Highland Drive. So this is basically the next step in the process, and then the CSM and this resolution will be recorded basically simultaneously.
Any questions for Rick?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution 2024-01 about discontinuing Highland Drive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have discuss and consider ordinance 01, 2024 Municipal Court. It says, you, Rick?
Sure. So this, basically these next two ordinances are making some minor revisions to the Municipal Court code, basically just keeping things in line with the sort of reorganization that the village is undergoing with the court. So the clerk's office is no longer gonna be in the village hall, it's gonna be at the police station, sort of like sep, well, the municipal services building, not in the police station area, but sort of separated off. So this ordinance is just making some minor changes to reflect actual practices.
Any questions for Rick on this?
Is the, is the only change is, it's not, we're not calling it holding or keeping an office, we're calling it hold, keeping an office, is that it?
The, there was a deletion basically saying it was gonna be in village hall and basically just saying that we're gonna provide an office. So it gives you discretion on where that location is.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 01, 2024 regarding Municipal Court as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second then, any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And then just connected to this, again, discuss and consider ordinance 02, 2024 against the Municipal Court Bond.
Yes, so currently, the village requires a bond for the municipal judge and the municipal court clerk. That's not a statutory requirement, I mean, you're required to pay for the bond. So the statute allows you to say you're gonna cover that through insurance. So we've had conversations with Civ Mick and the village's insurance policy would provide adequate coverage over this position. So we can, the village board wants to, we can eliminate this requirement and no longer require a bond because your insurance already covers the position, or positions.
Not some, not a ton. I don't have those fingers. No.
So, so Rick, you're saying we can either remove, remove the ordinance altogether or we can modify?
So, the reason that we're doing the modification to the ordinance is to say that we're providing insurance basically, rather than the bond. So bond requirement is by ordinance right now, so.
Just with the track changes, a little hard to tell what, what exactly that, that things are going on. That's why I was confused, so, that makes more sense.
I'm making a motion to approve ordinance 02, 2024 regarding Municipal Court Bond as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second then, any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have discuss and consider temporary Class B retail license for Cottage Grove Lions Club on May 11th. Decide.
Thanks, John. Pretty straightforward, the Lions has put in an application, I believe it's a car show that's happening on May 11th, so they would like to sell alcohol or beer, wine, so that's what's before you tonight.
I'll make a motion that we approve the temporary Class B retailer's license for Cottage Grove Lions Club on May 11, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have discuss and consider wireless services agreement and tower lease agreement with UpNet Wisconsin LLC.
All right, JJ can help fill in some details here. So right now, the village is leasing space on its tower to UpNet. Basically, the lease, you don't get any money from it, what UpNet provides to you in exchange for the space is like backup internet. So if we wanted to back out of the agreement now, we would need to provide notice by February 20th. So basically, the reason that we brought this forward tonight is to say, do you wanna continue that arrangement? Or we could provide a notice that we're gonna be terminating and try to renegotiate to get like actual market rate rents available on the water tower. And JJ's looked into the actual usage because I don't believe that the internet's actually being used that, that makes available.
Nope. Initially, in 2018, they provided connectivity. They provide their rural internet on the water tower. In exchange for that, they added some antennas and gave us connectivity between our buildings. We triple-checked with Johnson Block, they no longer are providing that even in a backup. So we, at the very least, should at least renegotiate and get some value, and given that we put in these two-year terms, we have the opportunity right now if we give them notice.
Yes, so the basic intent would be, if the village wants to, we could provide the notice that we're not gonna be renewing this agreement. If they are interested in still leasing out space, at that point, we may come back with another agreement that has more favorable terms, I guess.
So JJ, just to catch that, so Johnson Block isn't using that connection or UpNet isn't providing access to, or connectivity to, with the connection?
Well, now, if we get too technical, you're gonna lose me, but essentially, I think once TDS came and we redid everything with Johnson Block, this was a computer magic fix for us to connect the buildings back six years ago. And so I just asked the folks at Johnson Block, is it even providing backup? And they said they're not seeing it on any firewalls anywhere, it's doing nothing for us. And they're getting free space now, given it's not doing anything.
I mean, we could ask Johnson Block, I mean, it's just, question is, did Johnson, because Johnson Block redid a lot of the networking kit, like, is it because we're not, they didn't know to leverage it, or is it they're trying to use it and UpNet's not providing the connectivity?
I think, given what Larry was describing to me before we transitioned with all their upgrades and do the networking, I think even when it was providing backup, it was really slow and not really functional.
Well, it's not a very, yeah, I mean, 50 megs is not much, so it's, it's backup at best.
Yeah, so I think whenever I would bother them or computer magic that I couldn't get into the, whatever drive I was looking for was probably on UpNet. So even when it was providing that service, I don't think it was anything we want, so.
Do we know if we did renegotiate? Do we have any idea of like what that kind of disruption would be to UpNet?
Nope, not yet. Depending on how this conversation goes, I'll find out when I reach out to them later tonight or tomorrow morning.
Just note, I went to the broadband coordinator, came to the town hall about a month or two ago, right, and there's a lot of, you know, in, you know, town of Sun Prairie, town of Cottage Grove, town of Pleasant Springs, right, UpNet provides a really, you know, really important service, right? So I'm just, on the one hand, there's the fiduciary responsibility here, right, but on the other hand, there's the, hey, if we, if we rip this out, what, like, what are the, what are the consequences of doing it if UpNet's like, okay, we, we can't afford it, or we don't wanna do that, or we, are we now, you know, party to stopping service, right?
PSC might require us to actually make a payment on behalf of it. They're cracking down more on these, these rentals, and if PSC views it as that service is getting given for free, the village might actually be responsible to make a fair market payment to the water utility. So part of that is kind of closing the loop on, on that to make sure we're doing, doing our diligence there.
That was gonna be my next point, if we give notice, I think our, our previous attorney mistakenly brought this, I believe it's got a village president's signature, this should all have been 100% with utility commission, so those will be conversations that would happen with that body.
I guess it's just more, more information needed, right? Like, I think from a fiduciary standpoint, it makes sense because we're not getting, the, the, the value trade here is right, we give them space, they give us connectivity. It sounds like we're not necessarily getting connectivity, so it's worth a, worth some research. But at the same point, what are they providing, like, because we're providing the space, they're then providing a service to, a much-needed service to, you know, town residents, so like, it's kind of a tricky situation. So it's, to me, there's just more information needed to really make a good decision.
Yep, very, very tricky though when you factor in what Cameron references, PSC's concerned with our way of paying.
You had another layer of complexity here that, like, hey, you're not getting value, but now you owe us, like, we owe utility money because you're giving this away for free. So it's just, it's, it's really, really tricky.
Yeah, and, and the, basically the motion tonight could be either to say, we're providing notice to terminate, or notice to terminate and to renegotiate the agreement, just to leave the door open. The challenge is that the notice to get out of this agreement needs to be sent in by February 20th, or like basically 60 days before April 20th. So, you know, otherwise, we're in another two-year agreement, which, you know, it's not the end of the world, it's just, you're gonna be stuck in that situation where you're getting the service.
Can we, I hate pushing it, but like, February 19th is the next board meeting?
The village doesn't need this, right? Like, this is just backup, so.
It's not even backup anymore.
It's not even backup, like, David, I think it's, I, I understand other municipalities, but I, I think we're gonna beat a dead horse here, and we should just make a motion to terminate with potential renegotiations. Because the village doesn't need it, it's a waste.
Not necessarily.
I'm concerned about the PSC coming back and saying, you gotta, you gotta pay for that.
I guess all I'm saying is table it till the 19th is all I can say.
Let's give our legal folks the time they need to communicate right away. Why do you push it all the way to the last date? That's crazy.
I'm gonna make a motion to terminate the wireless service agreement with tower lease agreement with UpNet Wisconsin LLC.
Is, is that with the language to renegotiate?
With potential to renegotiate if need be.
All right.
What, sorry, go on.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
But I do have a que, question.
Sure.
Is the, essentially is that, is it, the payment that you were discussing has nothing to do with what we do here, right? Like, that's, that could happen either way, right? Is that, it's, it's not material to this motion?
It is not material to this motion, but if we don't do something, we could be
Understood.
At risk for paying our utility from the bill.
Whether we do or don't, I guess, one way or the other, does, does a decision mitigate that risk, is what I'm asking?
Yes, this decision would mitigate that.
Understood, okay.
Well, you could still owe a payment even if we are in the middle of a renegotiation.
It's an easier conversation to have with PSC, if you say, we, we realize that this is not a good agreement and we're work, working to get a...
Yeah, this agreement would just be in effect for 60 more days unless we get a new agreement to bring before the village board.
And that is my next question, in its current state, is the value delivered to us equitable to the value we're giving them with the space, right? Like, if they weren't giving us free internet, what would they be paying us for that space?
So there's, there's not a firm number, JJ's been looking at, you know, similar leases, but it's, you know, a couple thousand a month would be in the range, I think.
It varies.
Yeah.
It varies all over the place, and that's why the utility commission would be considering that. In an ideal world, this was brought up, and I just wanted to look into the status of this, this contract, because a, a potential cell carrier came, and as we're gathering information to take that to utility commission, we need to find out if they can live with UpNet and their equipment up. Ideally, UpNet comes to an agreement with utility commission at whatever amount that is, and the cell carrier does, and everybody wins, and the utility's bringing in the most revenue possible.
You can't have one cell carrier paying another one not.
That's where, and these are tricky because the cell carrier is a little bit different than the rural internet, and the, there's not as many comps for us. Everybody, everybody's water towers has a cell carrier on it. It's typically silos that have the things like UpNet. So gathering comps is gonna be a little trickier, but they are, they run the gamut depending on where they're located. So it's, it's really a, an issue for utility commission to take up.
Any other discussion?
So renegotiating it makes all of those things possible, I mean, the way the motion stands with renegotiation, we can come to a better place. Yeah, can things.
All right, with that then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we move right to village reports, commissions and committees, starting off with the library board. And I think Cindy's taking this because you weren't, weren't there.
Yeah, I had to be, I had a family emergency.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, the library board met on January 17th. We approved the purchase of a permanent story walk. I ordered it, and Parks and Rec is going to be, help install it in the spring. Tracy is coordinating a timeline, and you are the first to know that there is going to be a dramatic reading with the Monona Grove High School Theater students for the first book. The library board continues to work on process efficiency and improvement. We approved both a media and a cancellation of programming policy at our last board meeting. We discussed the first steps of strategic planning. We discussed the first steps of strategic planning, which we outlined in a memo. We had already revised our mission and vision statements, so we added a core values document with some additional edits. Our core values focus on community, transparency, equitable access, literacy and lifelong learning and resource stewardship. Tracy and I have spent a lot of time in the last month or two putting together a 2024 programming calendar and budget, which are all on track and we look to have about 80 programs throughout the course of the year. And we're putting an emphasis on adult programming. We have new Badger talks, including one in the next couple of weeks, I think. Six Lunch and Learns, collaborations with the Wisconsin Historical Society, and then all of our standard kids programming, which is always really popular. We also added a no-school day series over the next couple of months for kids to have something to do over, on a no-school day. And February is rare disease storytime, so we encourage you to kind of take a look at what we have going on. And the best way to do that is to sign up for our new newsletter option, which is a sign up on our library board page. Our first, I just finished proofing it, our first newsletter is going out tomorrow morning, which is exciting. We also approved our bills list, heard reports about outreach, all of our grant applications, and then the Friends 2024 activities, which they have a membership meeting this week. And then Earth Day is kind of in the works, being planned for. The next meetings are a facilities subcommittee meeting on the 21st and then our library board meeting in March.
Any questions for Cindy? All right, thanks, Cindy. Next then, we have Deer Grove EMS Commission. I'll take, I don't know if Chief's on or not. I'll take a first pass of this and Brittany, you can chime in, please. So we met on the 18th of January. Did the usual topics, covered the approval of expenses and write-offs, et cetera. There were no write-offs. Chief gave his staff report and we then talked about, again, the inter-governor agreement. We just need, at this point, I think the commission is just asking for a clean version of that to re-review at our next meeting. But it looks like all that is ready to at least get approved, at least at the commission level, and then it certainly has to go to all the municipalities following that. Then we walked through the 2024 through 2034 capital replacement schedule. Made a few adjustments there, but again, it's mainly ambulances and equipment. And then there was a bit, just a discussion, more so awareness, about the happenings right now in the Cambridge area with their EMS. There were a couple municipalities over there that have asked to get out of the agreement, their IGA with the Cambridge area EMS. And there's a number of things going on related to that, but it was more, again, for the commission members to be aware of at this point. There's been no request or anything of that sort. Then we went into closed session to walk through the chief's performance for this last year. Came out of closed session, adopted an increase and raise for the chief and then adjourned. Brittany, anything else?
No, that's it. PSC chief is online, so, again, chief, I would like to extend my sympathies and speedy recovery to your wife. I don't know if the board heard, she had an accident and chief has been taking his office hours and is at home taking care of her, so.
Thank you. I'd say if anyone wondered about separating a hamstring from your pelvis, I'd avoid it if you could. And as usual, President Williams, great job somewhere in the meeting.
Thanks, chief, again, speedy recovery. All right, with that then, we'll move, and if there's no questions, we'll move to NADBIG landfill. David or Vince?
Yep, we met January 22nd. Meeting started at 6:02. We approved the minutes, we paid the bills, we had no monitoring results, and then we closed the meeting at 6:04.
I like those kind of meetings. All right, any questions for David? Then we'll move right to the fire district.
That would be me again. Vince was out. Met later that night at 6:30. We approved the minutes, chief gave his report. We've got 42 staff. At that time, at that day, we had 346 calls for 2023. We had 31 so far in 2024. There were seven, seven specifically during that snowstorm, so that was quite a lot. And the pager replacement project has completed and came under budget by about 10K, so that was good. Chief then presented his 2023 annual report. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see it. I think it's on the website as well as Facebook. They do a really good job on it, I think, over the year and, over the years, they've been doing it. This is at least the third, if not the fourth. So we walked through that. We then did a formal, final, final approval of the purchase of the ladder truck. So that carried 5-0. And then, let's see, we were trying to figure out what to do with the pager replacement project, the 10K that we'd saved, so we tabled that till the next meeting. And then the next meeting is Monday, February 26th at 6:30, and then we adjourned at 6:43. It's a quick meeting.
Quick question.
Yeah.
On the, on the report for January, 73% of the village's calls were false alarms. Have we not addressed that? The chief's report?
I'm gonna open it. I don't think we specifically talked about it, but, let's see here. You're on page of the chief's report?
Yeah, on the first page.
It's addressed in the sense that fines have increased. Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, but we are doing the process of fining and...
Yeah, the ordinance is, ordinance was amended to have an escalation of, you know, repeat offenses to cost more and... Yep. Yep. So hopefully over time. Right, and we approved that, I believe, at the December meeting at the fire commission meeting. So it's, yeah, that has been, continued to be an issue during fire commission is the false alarms. And we've talked quite a bit. I know chief has come to the police chief and has talked with village staff. So it's trying our best. I know we've had the engineers involved too in certain parcels and have loved the thing, so.
I mean, based on what I've heard in previous meetings, it's not an anomaly for that particular month, but it's also not a huge time suck because they can kind of, a lot of times, they get a call, they know before they get in the truck that...
Right.
So it's like 73 times they had to run out and like respond in person to it. A lot of times, it's a couple of minutes, they aren't even hitting the truck.
The command vehicles really help too. So, I mean, they can, you know, one of the assistant chiefs or the chief can get to the location first and scout it out and see, is this legit or not, and then cancel the call. But a lot of calls actually, especially on the Belt Line N, 90 tend to get canceled en route anyway. So a lot of times, and this has kind of been a learning process for all three of us that are on the fire commission, that some, it's how they classify the calls too, is how, as you know, on the EMS too, right? Like, every, every call gets classified, right? And so as long as it's classified right, but yeah, we're continuing to look at the false alarms.
Anything else for David?
I guess, Cameron, were you aware that the under budget with the pager replacement?
Yeah, there, so, yes, I've talked with April and Chief Archibald. They had some ideas specific to training equipment. I think they're gonna round out the ideas and get that information back. And I found that out while they were doing their 2% due audit. So they have to go through that, that exercise every five years. I didn't hear a status update on how that went, but I'm assuming there was no issues, otherwise we would have heard something.
Next then, we'll move to law enforcement committee. We met on the 23rd of January. Covered some unfinished business related to the special events permit process. So just had, the committee had just a minor change for the form for IRS classification, 501(c) organizations. There was a 501(c) three on the form and it should just say 501(c). And then just wanted to, also, conditional on that approval was latitude for waiving the fees by the village board, which we're pretty certain was in the booklet along with that, but wanted to emphasize that from the committee level. Then we went through the village sex offender ordinance. And again, this was brought back through law enforcement because there's been some court decisions along the way, so we needed to update our offender ordinance as such. So that's what that was about. And again, I'm assuming both these probably could come back through to this board for consideration at some point.
Yes, I've been working with chief on updating the ordinance based on those comments. So anticipate having the ordinance at the next meeting, or both of those ordinances at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Then surprisingly, we had an update on the fleet status. Lo and behold, we got our 2023 squad a couple, a week before this meeting, so in January. So a late Christmas present or something of that sort. Somebody must have canceled out or whatever, we don't know. We're not gonna ask. We did get our squad. It is in for decal-ing. They're also taking the unmarked squad and getting that decal too right now. And then the opening process for 24, 25 squads is supposed to be this month, according to what chief had heard from Ford at least. So we'll put in for what we have in our capital plan there as well and see when and if we get those squads. But that was much more helpful to have two more in circulation with what we had last year with the fleet and the problems we've had with a few of those squads. Then just touched on, kind of final wrap-up, the holiday parking for food pantry incentive. Again, this was for the period of time with holidays. If someone got a parking ticket, they could come in and do a donation for the local food pantry. And chief said that a number of people, like almost 140 or so, took that initiative up. And many of those donations were more than the suggested five food items, which again, all goes to our, went to our local food pantry, which again, another successful year for that initiative. And so we'll look to do that again in '24. Chief just walked through the Christmas in the Grove and how the Meteorin MVBs, which are those, the barriers, worked as far as that demo. We were supposed to get ours, I guess, last week or so. Assuming they came in. And then we'll have those available for any future parades, et cetera, for usage for the village or other events that is appropriate. Just gave an update on the 23 budget numbers since the December numbers were in. The police department came in under budget mainly due to labor being a little bit behind because of openings. So that was the big part. Then chief briefly walked through the various reports that he presents to the committee each month and wrapped it up. Future agenda items, we'll go through the annual report, we'll go through the use of force next month or this month, and then internal affairs investigations as well, so. Chris, anything else? Did I miss anything? Okay. Any questions, law enforcement? All right, then we'll move down to police commission. They've been busy. I don't know if anybody, chief's not here, but he's on, okay?
Evening, President Williams and board. So police commission met on January 24th at 5:45 PM. They approved the November 9th and November 15th commission meeting minutes. And it moved into closed session to interview police officer candidates. Originally, it was slated to have three candidates. One of them withdrew from the process prior to the interview. They interviewed two candidates and moved them forward in the process. And we are currently working on the final steps of backgroundening those two candidates to add them to the Cottontown Police Department here in the near future. After the closed session, they moved back into open session and provided them update on agency personnel and where we're at for bodies and positions and things of that nature. And then also moved on to future meeting date and agenda items. Just gave them a heads up that due to the, still needing to fill two positions, we would be opening up another hiring process, which is currently active at this time. We're accepting applications till the end of this month and scheduling a police commission interview towards the end of March and then adjourned.
All right, any questions for chief? All right, thanks, chief. Next then, then next we move to Parks Rec. Heidi?
Great, thanks, Sean. We met on Thursday, January 25th and we talked about the exciting pickleball season coming up and there will be a pickleball advisory group made up of pickleball enthusiasts in the community to make sure that all interested parties have access to our pickleball courts. So thank the department for reaching out to community to make sure we have a good plan for the upcoming season. And then we also talked about Monona Grove banner on the concrete stairs at Fireman's Park. As you know, Fireman's Park is home to MG Baseball and Kevin, along with the baseball boosters, have really gone above and beyond to make that park a great home for our Silver Eagles baseball team. And I think it's an example of a really great partnership that we have. We have the park that is beautiful park and MG Baseball helps make it a great home for their team. So I have Kevin here with MG Baseball to just briefly talk about what they're planning on the steps there.
Hey, everyone, thanks, thanks for having me. Yeah, I guess, Heidi just said it best, like, we are trying to make that park as aesthetically pleasing as possible and putting things into it to try to help with that. The logo that we're trying to get there is, we also incorporated the Home Talent team since they are obviously historically been using that field longer than Monona Grove High School has. But one of the things that we're trying to do is with those cement steps, we're trying to kind of put a little artwork into that for backdrop on the field. And so it would cover roughly 70 feet of the cement, which is not all of it, but a pretty good chunk of the cement steps there at Fireman's Park.
Thanks, Kevin. Just wanted to talk briefly about the process. So the MG Baseball brought up for the holster case to be with the Silver Eagle logo and the Home Talent was concerned because they share the park. So the MG baseball boosters have agreed to pay for the entire, both logos you see here, so they can get this going, which I think it's gonna be a great addition to the park and I appreciate the boosters very much for making this happen and I think it's gonna look great. So I just wanted to bring it forward because of their great partnership they have with the village instead of just keeping it with the committee, so, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
So I think we have it as a technically discuss and consider. The committee did recommend to move forward with it.
I'll make a motion that we approve Monona Grove Baseball placing the mural on the concrete steps of Fireman's Park as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Heidi?
No, it's a pretty brief meeting. I'm sure Sean's gonna get calls this week since it's gonna be 50 for the courts to be open, but I don't think, I think, I don't think winter's over quite yet. So we'll meet again later this month.
All right. With that then, we'll move into reports from village officers. First up is one for myself, discuss and consider nomination for me to... to, uh, take on the Public Works and Properties Sustainability Committee for a brief period of time until the, after the elections. Heidi's got a, a conflict now, so, um, and I thought, since I'm familiar with that committee and can handle it for a few more months, then we'll, the committee will get reshuffled again, depending on how the elections all turn out, so. That's what that's all about.
I'll make the motion that John Williams be, uh, or that we approve the nomination, I don't know, um, for the Public Works, Properties and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
I think that works. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Me? No, I'm kidding. Abstain? I'm kidding. It's getting late. All right, uh, Rick, anything?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right. Cameron, you have something.
These, these will be really quick. Um, unfortunately, with way, um, so, a couple things to look at, the twenty-twenty-three carryforward request. Um, I put a memo in the packet, uh, just to kind of, as we take the steps in the finance department to kind of be more formal in how we do things. Um, I, a couple requests, uh, for carryovers this year. One was just driven by timing, um, with the, the squad. Um, the second was, uh, from Parks and Rec, uh, related to some, uh, repairs done, uh, needed out at Bakken Park. Um, so the, the, the first one, um, I don't know, Sean, if you wanted to talk anymore specifically about what out at Bakken Park?
Uh, this, this is for repairs on the tile wall, the, the donor tile wall that was done, um, at the beginning of the park. So they're all down, and we need to repair them, get them back up, and contractor wasn't able to get it done in twenty-twenty-three.
And then the second one, obviously, was, uh, the twenty-twenty-three squad purchase. Um, again, ordered back in twenty-twenty-two, didn't get until, of course, the first week of twenty-twenty-four. So my recommendation for both of these is approve the carryforward, and then, uh, due to the, the dollar amount for the squad, um, it actually will require a budget amendment, uh, twenty-twenty-four oh oh one. Um, there are a couple things that didn't need a carryforward. Uh, one, um, library had some surplus funds. Um, because of the restricted nature of those funds, um, those funds automatically carryover. Um, and then, uh, a small portion for the, uh, the clerk's office received a small grant. Um, but that, that has already been, uh, spent, so no, no action needed.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three carryforward request and the twenty-twenty-four budget amendment, twenty-twenty-four dash zero zero one, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then. Any further discussion?
Sean, with those tiles, was that, did they come down just because of age, or did someone knock them off, or?
Yes.
Both?
Uh, both. Uh, age, age, a little bit of age and the, and the, the grout failing, so.
How long were those up before they started falling down?
Um, onesie, twosies, about eight years, and then it's been more steady since.
And a lot of those are like painted by kids and stuff, right?
Correct.
Are, are you gonna replace those with similar things?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yep, we're piecing everything back together.
Sean's gonna redraw it?
All right, uh, we have a motion second then. Uh, any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Uh, next then, Communication Committee's been in this. First up, uh, consideration of vouchers.
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second then, any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence? I didn't have anything, I don't know if anybody else did. Upcoming community events? Still in the darkness of winter. But soon.
There's a primary, um, two weeks from tomorrow, right? Okay.
Oh.
And we'll be utilizing both polling locations at the election. Okay, great, thank you.
And that means it'll be virtual in two weeks, right?
Uh, so, yeah, we're virtual next time, right?
For meeting?
Yes. Correct. Thank you, Chris. Um, so for the public out there maybe listening, please check on vote, myvote, myvote, yeah, dot com or whatever, doc, for where you're supposed to go, because it'll be confusing at first, then we'll learn. Future agenda items? Matt, anything we need to shout out?
Yeah, tourism. Uh, that contract with, um, the chamber was only through twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the next meeting will bring a revised, uh, agreement to this board, um, as well as some updated, uh, events and projects that they did last year.
Super. Then with that, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. Closed session is regarding negotiating position to acquire a part, portion of a parcel number zero seven one one zero eight one nine eight five five one, uh, for the road right away. Uh, the village of Cottage Grove will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, Part C one, Part C E, deliberating, negotiating, purchasing public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting of other specified public business wherever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. All right, that's a roll call then.
Ballig? Aye. Murphy? Aye. Peterson?
Aye.
Stoa?
Yes.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Whitting.
All right, then I like a second motion then to go into closed session in regards to potential sale of a portion of village-owned property, parcel number zero seven one one zero eight one six zero five oh one. The village of Cottage Grove will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, Part C one, Part C E, deliberating, negotiating, purchasing public properties, investing in public funds, the conducting of specif, specified, specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Thank you, David. Uh, then again, we do a roll call.
Whitting? Williams?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Stoa?
Yes.
Peterson?
Aye.
Murphy? Aye. And Ballig?
Aye.
Recording.
All right, we, we've reconvened from, and back into open session. Uh, there are no items for consideration from the closed session items. Uh, item fifteen.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion second to adjourn, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody, have a good week.